We're ready to go, then I'm going to, in that case, I'm going to call the Board of Education, National Board of Education Budget Committee meeting Wednesday, March 10th, 2021, to order at 6:05 PM. And tonight, we have three presentations, Special Education, ELL, and Transportation. But before we do that, I, we're going to have Ms. Bishop read the role.
Yes. Ms. Bishop is here. Ms. Gilio?
Here.
Ms. Raymond is not here right now. Ms. Odin?
Here.
Ms. Brown?
Yeah.
Ms. Johnson?
Present.
Mr. Guarino?
Present.
Ms. Zim?
Here.
Ms. Timmons?
Here. Here, here, here.
I heard you.
Oh, okay.
I know, we had such a hard time the other night with my ears. We also have Mr. Chopra, Dr. McKinney, Mr. Donovan. Oh, Sharon, I don't remember your last name. I'm so sorry.
It's okay, Coffee.
Coffee.
Fairgrounds Middle School.
Yes. Mr. Parker, Mr. Falciano, Ms. Bernardo, Mr. Rose, how do, Mr.?
Racião.
Racião. And Dr. Andrade is here. Did I miss anybody?
Ms. Marsha Bagley.
Oh, Ms. Bagley, I'm so sorry.
Also here.
You switched over on my thing. Okay, so we're all here.
Okay. I'm going to turn it over to Administration. Dr. McKinney, looks like we have Special Education on to go first, but whatever order you want to go, that's fine with me. So.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino. Yes, we'll follow the order here. Ms. Bagley, are you able to share your screen and presentation?
I am.
Thank you.
Can everybody see this?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So, thank you for having me this evening. I believe this was sent to you already, but we can go through this quickly. I'm just going to try and move my video so I can't, I can see the whole thing. So, I'm here tonight to present. I'm sorry, I have to stop for one second because it's not letting me move through the slides. So, we currently have, well, as of February 16th, we had 2,066 identified students, ages three to 21, and some of our students have since changed status. So, this was a snapshot in time. And then the chart shows the number of students at each school by disability, or at schools by disability. And if anybody's doing quick math, you'll notice that the numbers don't quite add up. And that's because not all of our students have made it through the process. So, the 2,066 students is the number of identified students. And then the number of students by disability at all schools is the students who have made it all the way through the process and who are placed within our buildings or out-of-district programs. And this 2,066 number includes our out-of-district students, and we currently have 63 students in out-of-district placements. The next slide, if I can get it to go, just explains what each of those categories means. So, you'll see that these are the different disability categories that we have in the state of New Hampshire. And just a quick overview of the Special Education process. Whenever referral is received by the district, the district has 15 business days to meet with the parents and the team to determine what the suspected area of disability is, if there are any suspected areas of disability. And then, once permission to evaluate has been obtained, the district has 60 calendar days to evaluate the students and meet with the parents to review the results. Once a student is found eligible, the district has 30 calendar days to develop an IEP. And once the IEP has been agreed upon, placement needs to be proposed in the least restrictive environment. And school vacation weeks, worldwide health pandemics, weather cancellations, don't interrupt these timelines. We're required to continue to provide all of our special ed students with a free, appropriate public education. And COVID has significantly impacted our ability to continue this, as we've traditionally done. But our students, staff, and families have shown great resilience and creativity when facing this complete paradigm shift, paradigm shift between in-person and remote learning. So, we're requesting one additional board-certified Behavior Analyst, or BCBA, and two head teacher stipends for the middle schools. And the reason that we're requesting these items is to ensure that students continue to receive FAP in the LRE, to maintain the compliance with IDA and the New Hampshire standards. And the requests are intended to decrease the number of out-of-district placement referrals by ensuring our students' IEPs and unique needs can continue to be met within the Nashville School District. So, the rationale for an additional BCBA, we currently have three BCBAs. One is dedicated to preschool, and the two are for the remainder of the school district. Each of the BCBAs serving grades K through 12 have over 50 students on their caseloads. And an additional BCBA will alleviate the caseload numbers and allow for more training opportunities. And I don't have to read the rest of the slide to you, but just as an aside, we have, we've had students who have extremely dangerous and aggressive behaviors, and we've enlisted the help of our BCBAs to support these students. One particular instance was a third-grade student who was, the team was considering an out-of-district placement because his behavior was so maladaptive that he wasn't able to participate in any sort of regular ed classroom setting and was a danger to himself and others. And the BCBA was instrumental in assisting the team to identify the student's antecedent behaviors and helped the team develop an appropriate behavior plan. And now, that student is fully integrated into the third-grade classroom. So, we, our hope is that by adding an additional BCBA, they'll help in decreasing or eliminating the behaviors that we see sometimes and supporting students within the regular ed classrooms, thereby reducing the number of out-of-district placement referrals. And then, the rationale for the head teacher stipends at Fairgrounds Middle and Penachuck Middle, the principals from both schools have joined us this evening because they're very strongly support this. Currently, our two high schools and Elm Street Middle School have head teachers, special ed head teachers. And we're asking to add the stipends for Fairgrounds Middle and Penachuck because it allows for continuity of communication. During the times of COVID, we've relied heavily on our head teachers to support our staff within our buildings and relay pertinent information to all of the staff. In some cases, we've been short-staffed or understaffed, and our head teachers have stepped in to assist with evaluations, IEP development, and maintaining compliance, or attempting to maintain compliance. So, additionally, the head teachers work together to help work out transitions between the levels, and that will allow for more successful student transitions. And that is the end of my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Bagley. Does anyone have any comments or questions? Ms. Bagley, Ms. Johnson?
Thank you very much. During this pandemic, were all our paras in school working?
All of our paras were not necessarily in school working. Some of them are on ADA. Some of them have other leaves. But the paras that were able to attend in person, if the students were in person, were there.
Okay. Do we anticipate having to hire more paras this year to replace, or what are we doing for the ones that aren't, might not come back?
Well, we always have attrition for one reason or another. We do have a shortage of paras in the district at the moment, but we continue to have applicants, we, and try and support, you know, people coming to work for us, encourage people to come work for us, I should say.
So, the paras that don't come in, what about those students if they don't have a para as required by the IEP? What are we doing with that?
So, that's not part of my budget request. I'm not requesting additional paras.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
I see Ms. Gilio, and then Ms. Zim.
Hi, Ms. Bagley. I just want to thank you for proposing the addition of these three staff members. Having been involved in a school committee in another, in another state and another town for many years, and my involvement here, I mean, our out-of-district placements are one of our hugest expenses every year. And anything that we can do to forestall that and to keep our students here in Nashville with us in their, in their schools that they're assigned to, seems to be money well-spent many times over. So, I just want to thank you. I find this to be a really good move, and I'm wholly supportive of it.
Thank you.
Ms. Zim, I believe you're next.
Mine is, I guess it's a question, I admit that I don't have, I admit that my budget books are everywhere. I got papers from Monday. No, no book, it's a mess. So, I just would like for you to confirm that the budget that Dr. McKinney is requesting includes these positions?
Yes.
So, you're all set as far as I'm concerned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Brown?
Thank you. Could you give a brief description about what head teachers do as opposed to a regular classroom teacher?
Sure. So, they are also regular teachers. They just receive a stipend, because it's a stipend. So, they have all the same duties as a teacher. They do have less of a caseload in terms of the special education or for teaching. But they coordinate testing and meetings with families. They help assist veteran, not veteran, I'm sorry, new special ed teacher, and specifically in the case of special education. They assist the new special education staff in, you know, learning the ropes because every district's a little bit different. Special ed is special ed, but, you know, they, learning the ropes and helping to provide resources to our new staff. They coordinate testing. They are the, really, the conduit between the district office administration, so myself, and their staff. If we need, if we need to get information out to, to the staff, we go through the head teachers typically.
Thank you. And actually, I have one more follow-up question. I mean, I think it's great. I'm glad that they have people willing to do, do that extra work. Do we ever get in a position where we're pulling, where head teachers workload, doing that kind of thing gets too heavy, that we have, the teacher ratio gets too small, that we end up having to hire another special ed teacher outside of, in addition to the special ed department? Are we pretty protective of that?
We have not, we have not gotten to that point in the, as long as I've been in the district, we've had head teacher positions at the two high schools. Elm Street's head teacher position is fairly new, like 10 years, within the past 10 years. But we have not had to add additional staff because of the duties of a head teacher.
Thank you.
Okay, does anyone else have any, Ms. Bishop?
With the out-of-district tuition, are we looking at any kind of decrease with that, with the New Franklin Street School?
Not for next school year. As far as I'm aware, there may be opportunities. But for next school year, because things will be so new, expect to bring any students back. But our number of out-of-district students currently is the lowest it's been in many years.
Yes, I'm sure it is. That was all. Thank you.
Okay.
Can she just clarify that, Mr. Guarino, when you're saying it's the lowest, what, you said 63, right? So, how much was it in past years?
It's been as high as over 100 in past years.
That's, that's a dramatic difference, almost double. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bagley. I don't think anyone else has any other questions or comments. Thank you very much for the information. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next on board, we have ELL, and I think that might be Mr. Chopra.
It is. Gabby, do you have the, the presentation? All right. So, if we go to the second slide, I thought it would be nice to provide a little context of the ELL program just in general, why do they exist? It comes from a 1974 Supreme Court ruling. A group of students in San Francisco sued the school district, saying that they had no access to their education. And the ruling is the second bullet there where, I mean, that's one of the phrases that sums up the ruling. Basically, if you give students the same facilities and textbooks and all that, it doesn't mean they have equal access to the education because they can't access the, the content. So, that's why we have specialized program. So, okay, we can move to the next one. So, this is an overview of the ELL program. We've got 1,495 students in the program. 1,150 are active students. Now, what that means is those students are, they haven't tested out of the program yet, and they are eligible for services from an ELL teacher. So, those are the students that are in front of an ELL teacher, receiving ELL services. The monitored students are the students who have tested out of the program. They test out of the program on the access tests, which is the bullet below. We give that yearly. And once students test out, they test as proficient. They receive monitoring services for four years from their ELL case manager, who's also their ELL teacher. We currently have 32 and a half teachers in the program. The responsibilities of the ELL teachers are to identify and assess ELL students during the regi, Gabby, if we can go to the next one, please? Thank you, thank you. Identify and assess students during the registration process. So, when students register, if, we have a home language survey, which is part of the registration process. If the language other than English is indicated, that's a flag to, that means we have to do the, an assessment. And once the ELL teacher will do the assessment, then they determine if the student's eligible for services or not. If, when they're eligible, the parent has the right, or the, they have the right to make a decision to accept services or not. ELL teachers are obviously responsible for ELL instruction. They collaborate a lot with mainstream teachers. As you can imagine, mainstream teachers sometimes need some assistance with English language learners in their, on the content courses and mainstream courses. So, ELL teachers are, they will collaborate with the teachers, give them strategies, ideas, educate them about the proficiency level of the students and, and just, there's a, there's a, that's a big part of their job. And also, the case management. The case management, case management comes into place with the monitoring. So, the monitoring is the tracking of the students for those four years, once they test out of the program. So, that's kind of like they'll, the students who they don't see, who've already tested out, they just, monitoring means they go through, check their grades, make sure everything's going okay. If the student that's on their caseload that's being monitored is not doing well, they'll get in touch with the teacher and try to get an idea of, if it's a language issue, if it's something else. If it's not a language issue, there's nothing the ELL teacher could do about it. If it is, they'll assist that classroom teacher with, with ideas. And if, you know, in extreme cases, the student may be brought back for ELL services. We can go to the, the next one. This one gives us our, the ratios, which are much improved, thank goodness, in the school district that, from where they were a few years ago. So, we see the active numbers are on the, on the left, and the monitored students are on the right. So, for example, Amherst Street, 45 to 1, that's active, five monitored students. That means as a total, there's 50 ELL students in that building. So, you can get a sense of how we're looking numbers-wise. And like I said, tho, those, those numbers are much improved from where they were. Something I'd like to draw attention to is the three school, the four schools that have the .5 teacher, Broad Street, Charlotte, Main Dunstable, and New Surles. Last year, we, we didn't even have a teacher there at all. Those students were all in those schools with no services because the parents all declined services to stay in their neighborhood school. We obviously have a obligation to, to service those students. So, we've finally been able to get, we were able to move one of our teachers over, and she's covering those four schools right now. Luckily, the numbers are pretty low, so we'll see how she's able to handle it this year. But I'm very happy to have some services provided to the students in those schools. Our next slide is our growth chart for 20 years, which I've been in the district for 21. So, this covers kind of my, my lifespan here. The one thing that's, I would like to draw attention to is 2010 to 2015, the green number, the green column, that's, that's the number of teachers. So, we'll see, there wasn't a lot of movement from 2010 or 2008 all the way to 2015. And since 2016, we've added 10 and a half teachers to the program, which is something I think we should all be pretty proud of because this was a, I mean, if you've been on the board for a number of years, you know that, you know, our caseloads were really difficult, putting it mildly. So, I think we're, we're making the slow climb to, to, to give our students the services they, they need and deserve. If you, our next slide just kind of gives an overview of who our, our students are. We've got 45 languages in the program. 50%, 57% are Spanish speakers, and 9% are Portuguese. Those are our two, those are our two largest speaking, or, you know, languages. 57 different countries are represented in the program. And we've got 40, 40% were born in the U.S. and we've got 9% from Puerto Rico. So, just about half of our students are U.S. citizens. And 13, the largest outside countries, Dominican Republic with 13%. Other, we can go to the next one, Gabby. So, other important positions to, these are support positions to the ELL program. We have a, Yanni is our ELL Communications Coordinator. She, this is a service that was sorely needed to provide interpretation and translation services to our families, bolster up our family engagement, and also making sure that our non-English-speaking parents have access to INUSS. And luckily, Yanni speaks both and writes both Spanish and Portuguese. And the other position that's a support is the ELL Community Outreach Coordinator, which is, she, we have one that covers both of the high schools, and she's invaluable as well. Works with counselors to make sure the students have the appropriate schedules. A lot of parent communication from ELL teachers and, and classroom mainstream teachers. Or, and she also organizes parent engagement nights to keep our ELL families aware of what's going on in, in the school district. She also assists students applying to college. And our next one, this is, it's just an overview of our access test, which we're in the midst of right now. The window opened in February. We're about to start testing in a couple of weeks. And this is our proficiency test, which will determine if a student can test out of the program as proficient. Once, like, if this is the assessment, if they can test out, they'll go to monitored status. They eat, the test has four different domains, listening, speaking, reading, and writing. And the, the highest you can score on the test is a six. And the test out is, the threshold to get out of the program onto monitored services is a 4.5. We go to the, the next one. We also have a summer school program, which is very robust. It's voluntary for the kids. We had about, so, almost, a little under 400 kids combined in the entire district participate in the summer school program. The goal, obviously, we don't want language loss over the summer and even bolster up proficiency over the summer. And the programs aim, you know, we want to keep it fun as it's voluntary, keep kids engaged, and increase their proficiency over the summer. This, this is the first year, given our experience with remote instruction, we thought it, you know, why not use some of that experience and provide remote opportunities in our summer school program at both the elementary and secondary level. So, we'll see that. I'm sure that'll, you know, we, we had a very successful summer school program last year, so I'm sure that will, will be, it'll be interesting. See how remote, but I think it'd be interesting to offer that. And the last slide is just our, our funding sources, operating budget, and our summer school budget, and then our Title III grant. So, that's, that's the presentation this year. Do you have questions?
Ms. Zim, and then Ms. Gilio.
We have one, and I don't know, maybe it's not correct question, maybe you're not the correct person to ask. But I'm wondering about the immigration population. Within the ELL population, are most of the immigrants also included? And if so, how many are there?
Well, so, we, we've had just about 50% are U.S. citizens. So, it would be, the other 50 would be immigrants. So, I, but we, the ELL program, if an immigrant comes to Nashville School District and is proficient in English, they wouldn't be part of the ELL program. So, it, this is, we wouldn't, it'd be hard to gauge. We'd probably have to look at other data to get a cleaner look at that. Because there are students that would, you know, might come from Europe or Puerto Rico, and they're proficient in English and don't qualify for services.
So, when they're talking about the immigration population, they're not specifically talking about people who were granted, let's say, political asylum?
I, we may have some of that. I, I'm not, I'm, we don't really keep that data.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Gilio?
Hi, I just have a quick question, Mr. Chopra. Do you have, is your department fully staffed at this point? Do you have every position filled and expect that to continue when we return to school in September?
We, we, we had a little bit of difficulty filling one of the positions, but luckily, we were able to do that in, I think it was December or early January. So, currently, all the positions that we have, the FTEs, are, are filled.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, so, were you asking for any increases this year in positions or, because I didn't really get the gist of that in the presentation?
Right, that wasn't the goal of this presentation. And I'd leave that to Dr. McKinney to, if there's further exploration on that question.
Okay.
I have a question for Mr. Chopra. It's Mrs. Odin. A few years back, I believe it was UNH offered a program to train our teachers in ELL. And I think it was around 30 or 35, it could have been more, that went to that. Can you tell me how we're doing with those people that got the training? I know some of them are now, now ELL teachers, and those who are still in the classroom, how that has worked out for them?
Yep, we had, that was the cohort, well, it was called the Gate City Grant that we had in, with UNH Manchester. And the goal of that was to get 60 of our mainstream teachers certified in ELL, the classroom teachers. We didn't quite get 60. I think we ended up, after both cohorts ran their course, I think we ended up somewhere around the low 40s. But a lot, we did have a few that actually were hired into the ELL program. But some, we've had some of the teachers leave the district. But we also have teachers that did receive the ELL certification or, and are still classroom teachers. We were able to take advantage of some of them at the secondary level to create content courses where they were able to service ELL kids in, in like math and science, and, and within collaboration with the ELL teachers. But that was a, that was a wonderful program. Something we'd be very lucky to replicate.
Okay, thank you. Any chance they might run something like that again?
You have very good timing. I, I was, I sent an email recently to UNH Manchester to look at exploring something, something like this for the upcoming fut, well, basically the future, because that, it's such a valuable thing to have the content. Because that, it's such a valuable thing to have the uh content and mainstream teachers uh certified in ELL and uh familiar with, with just language acquisition and the strategies that go along with it.
Okay, thank you so much and I hope you get good news.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Oden. Is there anyone else with any questions or comments? Doesn't, doesn't look like, doesn't look like it, well, thank you, Mr. Chopra, appreciate the information. Okay, and uh I think we're ready to move on to transportation and that would be Mr. Rossio.
Evening, thanks for having me. So just uh, give you guys a brief overview of Transportation Department and what we do. Um, yeah. The most important uh line on this slide here is that nationally, the bottom line nationally, transportation, children in school buses is one of the safest forms of transportation available. Uh, we work with First Student uh who does a really nice job with safety. And nationally, there's over twenty-five million uh students ride a bus each day. So it's real safe and you, you do see some things in the news sometimes, um and, and they're bad, but when you put it in perspective of the amount of children that ride each day, it's really a safe form of transportation. Um, these are my budget numbers and you see that increase there, that's a contractual increase, there's nothing additional being added. Um, where do we go? We obviously transport to all the uh Nashville School District schools as well as Brentwood Program and Clearway, the three Catholic schools and the two, two charter schools in the city. Uh, who do we transport? We transport elementary kids that live more than a mile from the school. Our middle and high school kids who live more than two miles from the school. Transport kids who are students in transition to their home school. So if a child um is from the Doctor Crisp barrier and they end up in a homeless situation, maybe they live in Emporch Hill, then we take them back to Doctor Crisp. And we could also be, that child could end up in Manchester and we still take them back to Doctor Crisp. And we also transport students, uh, special education students with transportation written into their IEP. So not every special ed student, it's just the ones where it's written into their IEP. Additional things that we do is the high school shuttles between blocks, the late buses, woke ed buses, pretty active summer school programs. And we support all that, out of district programs, as Marsha referenced earlier, of course athletics and field trips. Um, route versus run versus tear, just some terminology we use here. Um, when we talk about a route, it's generally made up of three different runs. Uh, so for instance, a north run, a Penachuck run and a Birch Hill run would all team up to be one route. Um, a tear is what times they're going and you can see in the next sheet here. You can see that we've got them teared up, so you can see how north, we'd have to be there at seven twenty, Penachuck we drop off just before eight and then Birch Hill at nine, so that's how that would roll in for one route. Out of district transportation, typically in a non-COVID year, um, we transport about sixty kids to schools outside the city. And there's a list of schools, um, some of them quite far away, others not too bad, but still outside the city. And we also, at the bottom, currently transport seventeen students living outside of Nashville back into access to their education here. Uh, we use First Student for everything within the city. And we are in the first year of a contract with them. And then we do use Durham, Carrying Hands, North Reading and a few others that uh we may need depending uh where the students going, where they live for the outside, the out of district transportation. The students are living in transition, as I mentioned earlier. We uh bound to do that by the McKinney Vento Homeless Assistance Act. Currently have kids in Nashville students in Merrimack, Hollis, Manchester, Hudson, Derry, Methuen and Lowell. That list is always changing and evolving. Um, we also do have a large number of students that are in transition, but still within the city limits that we transport. Currently, the district as a whole has two hundred and fifty-three students in transition. Good news and bad news, the good news is there is still a pretty big national school bus driver shortage. Um, the good news is that it's not as bad as it was two years ago. And currently, I put us in the mild category, uh, which is good. If we were to go back to everything being totally normal, we might be sliding into the moderate category, once you start running all field trips and athletic trips and things and you acquire more drivers, but we're doing pretty well right now. Um, high school tickets, we do charge for the high school students, sixty-five dollars a year or thirty-two fifty for a half year. This year, we did not charge anything um for the past due to the pandemic. What's new in transportation, we've got a, on the horizon, a First View parent app, this is something that First Student's gonna give us. And hopefully, we can tie it in and parents can be able to get notified on their cell phone when their bus is coming. Um, they can check, pull out the app and okay, it's ten minutes away. Um, haven't rolled it out yet, this is a, a tricky year and, and things are evolving, we just got our last group of students in today and so we're still building stuff. Hopefully later in the spring, we could get that out, I definitely want it in for next school year. And the other thing that's new is the new school at Franklin Street, um relocating all the pre-K kids there in Brentwood will be um, be a challenge that I'm actually looking forward to. Um, transportation during the remote learning during the fall, we were still pretty busy. Um, uh, special ed students were coming in, it was a really individualized uh experience for a lot of those kids. Um, some kids would go in two half days, two full days, maybe just two full days, maybe three full days and a half day. Some kids were just going in for one hour a day and access the service, so I might bring them into a school at eleven, bring them home at noon. So I'd never really built anything that individualized um here before and it was, is quite the experience. Uh, we ran CTE buses, so those kids could access their transportation. Uh, we did run some afternoon practice buses for the athletes, we had SAT busing, we still provided athletic transportation. We had uh runs out there for the Catholic schools and we actually had three buses doing uh school lunch deliveries. COVID procedures, uh, students required to wear face covering while boarding the bus and staying on the bus. Uh, daily disinfectant spray, monthly barrier being applied by First Student, so they spray down every night. And once a month, there's a protective barrier that's put on, it's good for thirty days as well. Um, we are trying to social distance, when possible, we will only have one student per seat. And this year here, we did not run any uh mixed Catholic school, public school transportation, trying to avoid mixing school populations due to the pandemic. And we do have the um drivers wiping down the handrails between each run. And that's end of my presentation.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Rossio, do we have any questions or comments regarding transportation? I don't see everyone.
I, I have a question, uh, Mr. Guarino.
Yep.
I wanted to ask Mr. Rossio that um twenty, two hundred and fifty-three students that are in transition. Where is that number compared to other years?
I don't know, I'd have to get that from Bob from Student Services, um, he gave me the two fifty-three. I know that lately, since we've just started up, I've been seeing a lot more out of the city. Um, homeless kids, uh, the Methuen, the Dairy, that type of stuff. Um, we've got a whole bunch of kids up in Merrimack, but as far as the total number of uh students in transition, I don't know, I can get back to you on that.
Okay, thank you, I'd appreciate that, thank you.
I have one question.
Go ahead, uh, Ms. Simmons.
Yes, um, your IEP program, how many buses do you use for the IEP? Or is it just for the city?
So, um, non-COVID, last year, we ran thirty-seven.
For the IEP?
Oh, yeah.
Wow.
So when you're looking at school buses and we've got a lot of district-wide programs, so I'll, I'll give you an example. Um, when you're running a big bus to Main Dunstable, that bus is gonna leave a middle school. It's gonna drive through the Main Dunstable neighborhood, pick up a group of kids and bring them to the school. The special ed bus is gonna leave a middle school, it might have to drive up to the top of Amherst Street to get somebody that's in a district-wide program back at Main Dunstable. So it might go all the way up Am, Amherst Street, maybe have to run over to Conquest Street and get somebody. It still has the same amount of time as those big buses, so it ends up requiring more runs just to that school. So our district-wide programs can get, um, we have to run a lot of buses from the pre-K is a lot like that, cause we don't have pre-K in every school. So we're really um running all over the place for those kids. So you need more assets on the road to keep it within the timeframe.
Thank you.
Um, Ms. Mrs. Johnson and then um Ms. Brown?
Thank you very much, thank you for the presentation.
You're welcome.
Question, if we were to go back to full school in September, do you have, do you have um already a matrix on how you're gonna run the buses with all the students if they, let's say seventy-five percent of them came back?
So I don't have that number yet.
Okay.
So I will run it according to what we have to run based on the students and if, if I can drop buses, I surely will. Um, I've dropped buses from what we've run currently, from what we were running last year. But without all the numbers, it's tough for me to, but yeah, I'll definitely um plan accordingly.
Right, but I mean, I guess also if there's seventy-five percent of the kids going and you're picking them up at stop and the buses were full, you might have to run two buses at the same time in order to get the students to school if you're doing like every other seat and you're spreading them out that way. Wouldn't you have to probably use more buses for less kids to keep them socially distanced?
It depends, I mean, so this budget's based upon everything being totally normal, so we're not gonna social distance, everyone's coming back to school. State of New Hampshire, actually, First School Buses says we do not have to social distance, we can put two kids in a seat. Um, it's something that we decided as administration last summer, we would try to social distance when we could. So I wouldn't expect to have to add a whole bunch of buses if they were to come back.
Okay, perfect, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Go ahead, Ms. Brown and then Ms. Bishop.
Are we currently um running any, bringing the preschools, schoolers in or do their parents drop them off?
Both, but no, we, we're running our pre-k rooms.
And will there be um a, when, when we, if, when those kids are consolidated, is the, is the whole district gonna be consolidated over at the Franklin Street Building or just some of the preschools? Will that help your transportation budget?
Um, it's not gonna help per se, I think it's gonna help service. Um, being on one location, so essentially I can go through a neighborhood and bring them all to one place instead of going to the neighborhood three times and going to three different pre-k's. Um, and I've worked with Chelsea Gillis, the uh pre-K coordinator, and I gave her the times that I'd like the buses to run and be able to do that without adding anything, any cost to it.
All right, and I'm actually just have one other question. Um, how negatively would it affect the budget if we were to eliminate bus passes, the bus pass fee?
Um, I think the last number was somewhere between ninety grand and a hundred.
I don't love the bus pass fee.
I was exactly very reasonable. I was, is really reasonable, considered uh bringing some of these towns around to some of the bigger cities. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, Ms. Bishop?
Um, my question probably goes more towards Mr. Donovan. Um, with the amount of children experiencing housing insecurities, are we able to tap into any of the CARES Act money to help fund transportation for those kiddos?
Um, we probably could, we haven't needed it because we haven't been in full. If, if all the students uh were back in school in the fall full-time um and we needed to add a bus, that's a possibility, I'd have to verify with the uh, the grant management. Cause Garth may know, he has a.
Also, Ms. Bishop, we set aside funds from um the Title I grant to cover the cost of all that, so we do have funds available. Um, but then the next round of CARES Act funding, there could be flexibility to add money to that uh program.
I'm just, I'm worried because there are so many families who are experiencing housing insecurities because of, you know, the lack of employment and, and whatnot. Um, but it, it seems like it would, it's an umbrella that it could fall under if, if we're able to word it correctly, I'm sure.
Yeah, I think, to be honest with you, I don't think money's gonna be the issue, it might be finding enough drivers.
Mm-hmm.
You know, if you wanted to add eight buses, you wouldn't be able to find eight drivers that quickly, right Dave?
Right, that's a problem. And the things outside the city don't fit into our tiers too neatly, so if I better run up to, you know, uh, bed, bed, Merrimack somewhere to bring a kid back, that doesn't fit anywhere where I can just go from a high school right to the middle school, now I'm adding a half hour or whatever. So that's where it starts to get tricky, trying to figure it out in place, get them in places where they fit.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, Ms. Zim?
Did I miss where we, where we heard the final, uh, this is probably for Mr. Donovan, how much we the, the days that the kids didn't go to school, did, what, what's the final verdict on how that would be resolved? Who, who paid what? Did we pay the whole thing even though they didn't do it or just gas or?
No, we um, the agreement we had with the bus company this year was we paid a hundred percent if the bus was used, we paid eighty percent if the bus wasn't used. We're still doing that, we're going to be having a discussion with them a little in the next couple of weeks, we'll see if that uh will change. But since we had a lot of stop and go, keep in mind, originally, we were supposed to go back to a hybrid in October. Had to have bus drivers, that changed. Then we had, you know, had, had the district been able to come up with a plan and stick to that plan originally, it would have been a lot easier to negotiate with the bus company.
So did we lose, did, 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 did we even out with that or did we gain twenty percent? Did, is there money going back in the budget for next year from the leftover?
Well, there's, there'll be budget, there's money left over this year, actually use some of it to make the payment on the Franklin Street this year. So yes, we'll have a, a savings in the transportation budget for this school year.
Thank you.
Hey, I would like to uh bring up an issue um called Safe Roots to Schools. And I'm just wondering if our principals are aware of um Safe Roots to Schools Coalition. It's kind of a thing that's happening nationally across the country. And there's actually a Safe Roots to School program each state. Uh, DOT, Department of Transportation had, had a Safe Roots to School program. Um, and uh so Mr. Rossio brought up what is new in school transportation. Um, what is new in school transportation is what was old in school transportation, which is uh encouraging more students to walk and bike to schools. We still have a lot of uh schools that are within walking distance of, of homes. Um, and I know as a parent, uh, a lot of parents drive their, tho- those quote-unquote walking students are actually being driven by their parents, either dropped off or picked up after school. Um, I know my own experience was, we had a elementary school within walking distance, but our kids were dropped off by my mu- my wife in the, in the morning, but they did walk home in the afternoon. Um, so I'm wondering if we can do more to get the principals, because usually, I, I know from my own experience about Safe Roots to Schools, that it's usually the principals, the driving force and the PTOs. They can get parents involved and uh also coordinate with the city DPW um to get, to get some grants for better sidewalks. But I'm, I'm hoping that we could do more to encourage uh students to.
We have done some of that in the past, I know New Searls did some things, um, Ledge Street, they, they did something with um, I know they got some bike racks put in and I think there was some um roadwork or sidewalk uh stuff done, so the kids could bike to school. I think, you know, one of the problems you have with that up here is the winter and there's a lot of time in the winter where you, you can't access the sidewalks or.
Right, and, and that brings up the ever uh, the uh, the issue that was talked about at Mount Pleasant, where, where we need more sidewalks plowed up in that area. But that's something that we have to, it, I think it's essential that the principals uh again, and, and coordinate with the city DPW and really people get to know each other and work uh together along with the, with the PTOs. And everybody seems to be working in their own silos, but if we can get that, people together and get that coalition going, I think, I think we could. Go ahead, Ms. Brown?
I, I really like the way you're thinking, Mr. Guarino. Um, I do think it's worthwhile to encourage more kids to walk or bike to school with that kind of exercise. Um, so I, I'm wondering if maybe moving forward from I, I'm wondering if maybe moving forward from tonight, we could think about doing a joint letter of the board to the city requesting a priority for sidewalk, sidewalks on schools to be, have priority for plowing and clearing off. I think that every single time you know, I drive down Broad Street almost every single day, we've got a nice wide sidewalk with several bus stops down there. And I think about how many high school kids or could walk to school, or kids to Broad Street could walk that choose not to because the snow's piled up to your waist, and I bike there regularly as well. I, I don't know. If that's something that the board would be interested in, I would definitely be willing to draft something and sign it.
Yeah, I, I think we should, we should have some kind of task force with, with representatives from the, the city, from the PTOs and from the and from the school department. And because there's a lot of issues, I know that at Fairgrounds Middle School and Elementary School, Cleveland Street, some, some parents do want to, you know, they do want to get their kids walking, and you know, it's, it's dangerous because of speeding in that area, and you know, there are things that can be done. And, and I know that the joint, from the joint committee with the alderman, that the, they, they did have a traffic consultant looking at Cleveland Street because of the the middle school improvement. So, so I think that's a step in the right direction, and I think we have to keep it going, but we have to there, there has to be, I think, maybe a, a task force so that we can bring up all these issues. Go ahead, Ms. Zim.
Well, I was listening to the Finance Committee yesterday, and they were talking about the lack of, of monitors, crossing guards, you know, the traffic directors, if you will. And I don't know, when I was speaking to the alderman from Manchester, he was telling me that their alderman actually can have insurance through their city as an employee, even though they don't make a lot of money. If they don't have insurance, it, it's another magnet, if you will, to try to get people to run. I wondered, they were saying yesterday that the crossing guards were, were frequently elderly people who are retired, and they could afford to work for peanuts, because, and you know, and break up their day because they were basically retired. So I'm wondering if, if that might be a magnet. I don't know. If you have this task force, it might be something they want to discuss, because I thought it was interesting that Manchester had, had insurance, but I mean, I had never heard that from any other Board of Education, so but it was interesting, and I thought it might be a magnet that we could conceivably use to try to attract crossing guards, monitors, you know, lunchroom monitors, that kind of stuff. So I want to throw that in because that was just talked about yesterday.
Sure.
Thank you for bringing that up, Mrs. Zim, because as people were speaking about that, we have seven positions that are left unfilled, and some of them are on very busy streets that kids have to cross, and I, I am not sure we want kids riding their bikes across busy streets. So I think we have to be careful and look at how the, the situation with crossing guards is going, because I wouldn't want to put any of our children in a position where they have to cross a busy street.
Yeah, I think they were talking about Kinsley Street. Was that the street they were talking about?
That was one of them. East College Street. Mm-hmm. Yeah, some busy streets.
Yes.
And that was for elementary and middle school, so it was two levels.
Okay. I just wanted to bring that up. I thought this was the appropriate time to get people to start thinking about sort of thinking about out of the box, so to speak, and
Right. If we, the other thing that comes to mind is, I wonder if there's a way you could tie, one of the problems with the crossing guards and the monitors is that if you only do one of those, it cuts up your day, so you can't do anything else. But if we tried to coordinate it so that they could do both, making it a full-time job, they could be lunchroom monitor, and in the morning and in the late afternoon, they would do the crossing guard, so they would pretty much get a whole day.
Right.
And even if you went to, I, I just think there's got to be a way for us to make it more attractive, to make it, because I do think it's, I, I agree with Mrs. Oden. I wouldn't want, I, I don't even want to be in a car on those roads. I mean, you know, they zip down those roads. They're, they're, they're not real slow, so
Right.
Coming from a tunnel, it's scary. Thank you.
Well, I know in the city of Brockton, the the, the custodians actually are, are used for crossing guards. So, I mean, they'll, they'll have an eight-hour day, and they'll, they'll, they will just start, a couple of them, they, they will start early, and they'll do two hours as crossing guards, and then the rest of their day will be, you know, as a custodian.
And he said yesterday that, that they do frequently use the custodians, but they have to go and take a, a, a course to certify for that. But that, that is more expensive, because our, it's $17, they said, basically, for a, a crossing guard or a monitor. But our custodians start at like $42,000, so I, I, I think we're, I think we would be better to go something where we could, I don't know, combining those to me made sense, but something you need a task force to look into, that's for sure.
Right, definitely, yeah. No, it makes sense to have, like, you say, a lunch monitor, or, or people that do other jobs, that they could, they could also do that job, too. Get, but they have, anybody, anybody has to be certified, even police officers, you know, they should be, they should, they should
See, I didn't know that. I was surprised yesterday to hear, but that's good. That, that's a good thing.
Yep, yep. So I, I just wanted to bring that up, that issue up. I don't want to prolong, keep, keep going on and on, but does anyone else have any questions or comments regarding transportation? I don't, I don't see any. So I want to, I want to thank you, Mr. Rossio.
Thank you.
For your presentation. That brings us to our the end of the agenda. Do we have anything else? I, hands, Ms. Ms. Zim?
Well, I, I do have a question of Dr. McKinney, and it probably is coming up, but I was thinking tonight, as we were listening to these, that one of the, one of the reports I always look forward to in budget is an assessment of our classrooms. How many kids are in each class? How many in that, how many are special education? How many come in and go out? And how many pairs they have for each class? I, I guess from my perspective, one of the most important things is to try to keep our classrooms at a manageable number of children. And so I, I, if, I, I see Dr. McKinney saying yes, so I, I guess that's something that's coming down the road. Sounds great. Thank you so much.
Okay, so I want to, I want to thank Ms. Bagley and Mr. Chopa and Mr. Rossio, and everyone from administration for, for their presentations tonight. I think we're at the bottom of the agenda, but when we do leave, we're going to have a everyone should stay. Do you have one more comment, Ms. Brown?
I was just reminding you of the non-public, so that's all.
Right, we're going to have a, thank you. We're going to have a non-public, so we're going to entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting, but everyone's going to stay on, except administration for, for our non-public.
So, motion to adjourn.
Okay, I, I heard Ms. Zim make a motion to adjourn, and someone seconded?
Seconded.
Ms. Oden.
On the motion to adjourn, Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio? I see you nodding your head.
Yeah, I tried to press the spacebar. It didn't work. Okay, so yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Zim?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
And Ms. Raymond is not, is still not here. Okay. Motion to adjourn passes.
And we are adjourned at 7:05.